Before we start, Sarah, who's our Democratic Services Officer, will read the housekeeping arrangements.
Okay, so please can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode, please, as to not disturb the conduct of the meeting. There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the council staff present. The assembly point is in Tudor Square. The meeting today is open to the public and will be livestreamed and for subsequent broadcast via the council's website. You should be aware that the council is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during this webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's published policy. By entering the meeting, you are consenting to be filmed and to the possible use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. If I can ask members and then officers in attendance to introduce themselves, starting on my left, please.
councillor Tobey Mallinson, Hillsborough.
Good morning, everyone. councillor Julie Growcutt from Stockbridge, in the Pardon Ward.
Good morning. councillor Sophie Thornton from Beechif and Greenall Ward.
Good morning. councillor Ron Whittaker, West Eclesfield Ward.
Good morning. councillor Steve Ares, Graves Park Ward and Deputy Chair of the Health Scrutiny Subcommittee.
Hello.
councillor Rob Bannister from Graves Park Ward.
councillor Lauren McCain from Oakley Ward.
Lucy Davis, Chief Officer of Healthwatch Sheffield. Signed in as a Nigat Beshera. I don't know if that matters or not.
Good morning. councillor Mick Rooney. Still IT challenged. Thankful for the help that he gets every time I come in this place. And see what I mean?
I'm Sarah Hyde. I'm Democratic Services Team Manager.
Hi. I'm Debra Glenn. I'm the Policy Improvement Officer that supports this Subcommittee.
Okay, thank you all. I'd like to just welcome Julie Growcutt to this committee as a new member. So, welcome and thank you for joining, Julie. And I'm sure we'll give our thanks to councillor Diane Hurst, who served on the committee last year. And also to Lucy Davis, who I must give apologies to because we don't have a name card for you. But Lucy is our co-opted member from Healthwatch. And I think her name has also somehow got missed off the list of attendees on the papers. So we'll rectify that, Lucy, and apologies to you. Okay. Any apologies for absence, please, Debra? And do we have any items that require the public to be excluded from the meeting? Do any members have an interest to declare in any of the items of business on the agenda? None? Okay. So on to the minutes of the previous meeting, which are in your agenda pack. And we'll just very quickly go through those minutes. It's on page 11. If there are any comments, just shout up. Page 12 of the minutes. Page 13, 14 and 15. Our members had me to accept those minutes as the true record of that meeting. Or on the 6th of June. None? Okay, thank you very much. And then item five, public petitions, questions and statements. Do we have any public items today? None today? And then item six, members' questions. Now, we had members' questions from councillor Toby Mallinson. And we have those here. Toby, and you've received written replies to those members' questions. And you have the opportunity, if you want it, to ask any supplementary questions.
Thanks, Chair. And you saw, well, they only appeared to have been published 10 minutes before this meeting. And I only noticed that three minutes before this meeting. So I've had a chance to read through and not had the time to think of or really think of proper supplementary questions. I'll seek some advice about them as well. So I would ask, okay, I'd ask the people, I get the opportunity to ask supplementary questions next time.
I'm just going to check our procedure because this is still quite a new procedure. And you're actually the first member of the committee to use this function. So we're a little inexperienced. Just give us a second. Okay. So we'll make sure that the opportunity for you to ask supplementaries on these questions is there on the next agenda.
Thanks, Chair.
All right, thank you. Right, on to our first substantial item of business today, which is to look at our own report on dentistry in Sheffield. So this is to be presented by Debra Glenn, who's our Policy and Improvement Officer, who's kindly pulled the report together following work that this Subcommittee's done, surveying the people of Sheffield about their experiences accessing dentistry through the NHS. And we held a public workshop, which backed that up and gave people a chance to give more of their personal stories. So Debra's going to present our findings from those two exercises. And then we have Debbie Stovin with us from the Integrated Care Board, who will respond to that report. Okay, Debbie, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. And I'll try, oh, crikey. That failed in the first slide because it's way too small for people to read. So I do apologise for that. So I'm going to do a very brief overview with the PowerPoint and then obviously answer as many questions as I can about the actual report itself. And Debbie will be with me for that bit as well. So some key facts about the survey that we did. We had 426 responses. We also included some quick polls on the Have You Say website, which is the website that hosted the survey. And we only had 15 responses to those. And when we discussed that with people in the workshop, there was a lack of awareness that the quick polls were there. So they clearly weren't attention grabbing enough on the actual website. So that's a learning point for the future. The survey asked about, it was kind of broken down into sections. So we had a section on routine dentistry appointments, emergency dentistry appointments, NHS waiting lists for dental services, private dental care. And we had a kind of open-ended section, which asked for people to provide a written summary of their experience of the whole thing. We also had, as councillor Milsom has mentioned, we also had a workshop, which was on the 11th of July. And we had members of the Subcommittee there. We had representatives from the South Yorkshire ICB and members of the public who'd expressed an interest via the survey. So if I go on to the section on routine dental appointments, and just some quick stats from the survey. 262 people, so that was 62% of the survey sample, said that they had accessed a routine appointment. And of those, 150 people, which is 57% of the people who had accessed a routine appointment, got this appointment locally to where they live. So we gave people some options, which were locally to where you will live, another part of Sheffield or outside of Sheffield. And you will see that 19 people had to travel outside of Sheffield to access that appointment, which meant that a total of 244 people got their appointment within Sheffield. Of those who didn't get access to an appointment, by far the most common reason was that they had tried to get one but couldn't. So 71% of people said that they had tried to get a routine appointment, but they weren't able to. 36 people hadn't tried to get one and 10 people said they couldn't afford the NHS charges. Sorry, technical hitch. There we go. Thank you. So when asked about other household members, so people who had, who'd answered that first question, were then asked about other household members and a similar pattern of access emerged. But it's worth noting that there were 60 households with more than one person unable to get a dentistry appointment. Okay, moving on to the emergency appointments. 120 people, so 29% of the sample, said that they had accessed an emergency appointment. And of those not getting an appointment, 24 people said that this was because they had been unable to get one. So the most common reason stated was that they hadn't required one. And four people said that they couldn't afford one. Initial analysis of the written information given in the survey showed that experience of emergency appointments has been more positive from those for routine appointments in terms of availability and quality. And there's a little bit more about that coming up. In terms of waiting list, 28.9% currently on a waiting list for an NHS dentist. 106 of those people have been on a waiting list for over six months, with 54 of them being on a waiting list for over two years. So the length of the waiting list is clearly, coming out of the survey, is an issue. And of the people saying they're not currently on a waiting list, over half of them gave the reason that they hadn't tried to get on one. Private dentists, 33% have accessed private healthcare, 139 people. And in the open-ended section that I mentioned, 12 people mentioned opting for private dental care due to the lack of available appointments and long waiting lists within the NHS. A very brief overview of the profile of the respondents. So most of the respondents were equally spread between the 35 to 64 age group. Only 9% were under 25. 77% of respondents were female, 21% were disabled and 6% were Black and minority ethnic. This is the questions that we posed on the day of the workshop. So we didn't want to kind of shape the discussions. We wanted it to be very much a kind of response to concerns of members of the public that had taken the time to turn up. But we did ask them to consider, I presented the findings that you've just heard to them. And they said, we asked them, do you think the findings reflect your experience? And is there anything that you think is missing from the findings which need to be considered? And that was kind of as much structure as we gave to the discussions. And it was an open-ended discussion in a round table format. So feedback from the open-ended questions and the workshop suggested a number of prohibitive factors exist when considering access to dentistry services. And they're listed there in tiny writing, so I'll read them out to you. The length of the waiting list, as mentioned before, the cost, travel, disability access and difficulty accessing follow-up care after emergency treatment. Which kind of goes back to the point that I mentioned earlier about the fact that people tended to find it easier to get an emergency appointment than a routine one, which then obviously left them vulnerable to not being able to access the follow-up care. It's not moving. There we go. Thank you. More people experienced difficulties than found it easy to access dental appointments. So I mean, I think that's fairly self-explanatory. And we also asked for people's postcodes. And that took a bit of ploughing through because it wasn't coded. It was kind of an open-ended question. But what we did discover that there was, the clustering of respondents around the postcodes doesn't vary significantly. So the people that accessed a routine appointment and the people who couldn't access a routine appointment, so in other words, those who answered yes or no to the very first question of the survey, the clustering around the postcodes didn't vary between those two groups of people. And the recommendations which are contained within the report. We've asked the dental team at South Yorkshire ICB to consider providing us with some further information, which is itemised within the actual report, and to conduct a review of their contractual arrangements in light of the findings of the survey. And we'd like that to be the subject of a further report to this Subcommittee, but Debbie can respond to that. And the Health Scrutiny Subcommittee to include stage two of the project in the work programme for this year, incorporating the following, which is a working group to oversee further reviews of access to dental services by marginalised groups. So there was a number of marginalised groups that are detailed in the report that came up, predominantly in the working group, it's the workshops, sorry. So to do some further kind of deep dive work around those particular groups' access to services. And also a report on the Westfield Scheme, and that was in light of the number of people that were accessing private dental care. And for all partners really involved with the lobbying of national government around the findings of this report. So I'm happy to take any questions. I would say that the report obviously is, still can be amended in light of any discussions today. And then obviously we can finalise it after today.
Thank you very much, Debra. That's really helpful. Thank you for presenting it in such a clear way. I think we will have a short period for members to ask questions of Debra, just to clarify anything that you want to in the report. And then we'll move on to hearing from Debbie Stovin, the ICB's response to our report. So members with questions, Mick and then Anne.
Thank you, Chair. If some of this has already been covered somewhere in the process, I apologise because I've been rather inactive in this last few weeks for health reasons. So I haven't really participated in this evidence gathering process. So in terms of the actual dentists themselves, where do they express their opinions about the service? Because I would have expected them to be quite reciferous in terms of what they think of how the process is, the service does or doesn't work and whether or not there was any comments within the ones that we received. Do we also have lists of dentists that are taking on NHS patients? And where in this, where in the system locally does Charles Clifford fit in? Because that is a lifesaver for some people who find themselves in pain and usually about four o'clock in the morning when you get, you know, whatever. Anyway, I just wondered where that fits in to this system. Okay, that's it for the time being. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, councillor Rooney. Yeah, we didn't do any survey work or any consultation with dentists themselves. And I think that probably is something that should be done in the next, maybe in the next phase of the project. I know that the Chair has had contact regarding that. And I think it is something that we would like to try and facilitate if we can in the next stage. The list of dentists were requested and were provided. And we've got that information. It was requested at the workshop and Debbie and colleagues provided that information. And was the final one? Oh, yeah, Charles Clifford, yeah. Charles Clifford was mentioned specifically in a number of the responses. I have to say, the responses were mixed. A lot of people that mentioned it were very kind of appreciative of the facility. But there were also some issues in terms of people's experience, in terms of communication between Charles Clifford and the dentists. So that was where the issue of being able to access follow-up appointments following emergency treatment came up.
To ask, if you don't mind. I'm fortunate enough to actually have a, be on the books of an NHS dentist. But the biggest problem we have with that particular surgery is that most of the dentists work part-time. They have another practice, a private one, on top of the one that they provide for the NHS. And that does unfortunately result in significant numbers of rather abrupt cancellations of appointments. And I'm just wondering if that was ever, if that was raised as a problem? The fact that there are often cancellations, rather unfortunate, cancellations of appointments?
Yeah, that did come up. Cancellation of appointments was kind of, what I did was I kind of grouped responses in terms of whether they were able, whether they were able to access them and also what the quality of the appointment was. And so we kind of grouped them in terms of bad experiences and good experiences. And yeah, the cancellation of appointments did come up under the bad experience category.
Just a comment really. Firstly, thank you for all the work that you've put into the report. I thought the dentistry workshop was really useful. Sorry, I'm looking one way. I thought the dentistry workshop was really useful. It was really well organised. And the tables I was sat on, the differences of opinions that people brought to the workshop was really good. And some of them that I hadn't thought about, there was one participant who was from a very marginalised group and her experience was clearly very different to the main sort of experiences. Also, it was quite useful. We had an NHS dentist on the table that I was sat and her feedback was really excellent. So yeah, so it was a really good piece of work, I think. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for the report. I've just got a couple of things about it. On page eight, paragraph 3.5, it says, the evidence is organised around the three key areas outlined in 1.2. But I couldn't find any three key areas. I'm not sure if that paragraph is just superfluous, to be fair. But it just confused me a bit when I was trying to organise my thoughts around the report. So maybe could look at that. That makes sense. Oh, I missed something. Oh, it's four things, that's it.
I think it might be a typo, councillor Mallinson. I think it's supposed to say 3.2.
3.2, it's four things. Okay, fair enough.
Yes. Yeah, and I can't count.
Other questions I've got are around the, just the survey itself. I think it was an online survey, wasn't it? And I don't know if any effort was made to reach particular groups or if it was just put out on the council's publicity. That's a question, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. That was raised at the workshop, actually. And I think that's the thinking behind the recommendation that we do some further deep dives into maybe some specific marginalised groups because it was purely an online survey. And the limitations of that were discussed at the workshop.
Thank you. I think we've got these pie charts of the results. It would be, and this is sort of maybe for all council productions, it'd be useful to have a little pie chart in the corner showing the actual population of the different ethnic groups, if you like, of different disabled, you know, so you could, you sort of can compare the results with, to how close it matches reality in terms of the people that were asked. I think that might be a really useful thing to do.
Yeah, thank you.
With this report or in future reports.
I'll note that.
I was a bit confused because there seems to be two sets of results for the equalities answers. So for example, if you look on page 25, there's ethnicity, it's about ethnicity. And if you look on page, oh, hang on, let me just get this right. Don't want to be wrong. Yeah, page 25 and page 56, there's the same question but with different answers. So I was a bit, and that matches other ethnicity, also this protected characteristics as well. There's quite a few questions that seem to be repeated. I don't know how that's happened or whether there was two surveys or something.
No, I'm not sure how that's happened either. I'll do a dig into that. My suspicion is that if the figures are different, it'll be a printout for answers to a specific question rather than the entire survey. But I will, I'll dig into that and make sure it's sorted.
Page 25 is relating to answers for question five and page 56 is related to answer for question 25. So I don't know.
I'm going to pause that there because we will be limited for time in the end, councillor Mallinson. So just to point out that the report was circulated to members of the Subcommittee in advance for comments from Debra. So perhaps you could pick that up by email afterwards if there are corrections to be made or queries about paragraphs because we want to concentrate on hearing from Debbie Stovin and having time to discuss things with her. Is that okay?
That's a fair point, yeah, okay. And just an apology as well, I should have mentioned this earlier. I'm actually time limited and I'm going to need to leave at 12. So hopefully we'll get through things by then. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Are there any other questions? Steve, I think you had your hand up.
Yeah, one or two more questions, Chair. More comments and welcome. And thanks, Debra, for, I thought it was an excellent way they put together the report. I was part of, I attended, and here. I thought it was a very good workshop. And I've just gone across some of the notes from the table I was sitting at. And you've drawn out those, I feel, in the report. I'm looking at the issue that was raised at our table about the right to get a second opinion. You know, that was discussed at our table. I'm just picking out highlights here. The issue about the membership, the dentist list was discretionary. So, you know, there wasn't, you know, it was up to the dentist to sort of, that was, I'm just reiterating what has already been covered in the report, basically. And the issue about, that was mentioned about children, people had said that children had been refused treatment. You know, being able to get, you know, it's difficult with children getting access to the membership, you know, the sort of dentist membership. And they raised the issue about possibility of charging. Anyway, but I think there were, just to say, thanks, Deborah, for the report.
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick comment. Thank you, Deborah, for the report. It is really good. It's very valuable. Without oversharing, I broke a tooth yesterday. And the good news is my dentist is going to see me later today. I've got an emergency appointment. So there is some really good, certainly for me, positive news out there, which is lovely. My comment is just around the postcode areas. I think the information on there is quite illuminating in terms of the postcodes where we've had greater responses than others. And it's just a comment really, in terms of moving forward. I think there is something we can learn from picking up and going to some of the postcode areas where we've not had such a great response. And particularly if we start looking at how that fits with deprivation across the city, to see if there is any correlation there. And perhaps we need to do some just widening out of the work and how those two things fit together. Just that comment. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks. Okay, Laura, thank you.
Thank you. And thanks again to Deborah for that report and the work on the workshop. Yeah, I was going to mention postcodes and the postcode clusters that we had were not the most deprived areas in our city. And I was still quite shocked by the workshop, by sort of the extent of people struggling to access dental treatment. And it does make me think, you know, what is the true picture like across the rest of our city? I think the thing that shocked me the most, perhaps, was talking to parents and carers at the workshop. And there are just so many children not getting treatment, waiting for dentists for years and years. And, you know, it's not good if adults are waiting four years for a dentist. But for a child, four years is a real, for example, is a really big chunk, really big percentage of their life. And I think, you know, we're storing up problems for the NHS in the future at the moment because those children aren't getting the treatment now. And just, you know, the struggles. One parent who was there said that their child had had treatment at the dental hospital, been referred back into the community. And they needed some ongoing treatment by their community dental practice of, on their teeth, I think every three months. But they couldn't get an appointment. The appointments just weren't there. So the child was having really big gaps, waiting for this treatment that they were supposed to have regularly. And there were lots of stories like that. And I just think it's just worth highlighting. It's important. Thank you.
Thank you. And Rob?
Pretty similar, really. What I think we could do is full audit of where our dentists are. So we can make sure that we don't end it with the dental deserts that Wes Streeting was talking about this morning. If we don't have full data of right across the city and especially who's got NHS. And touching on what Laura said, evening appointments. Because the amount of time we should be having to pull kids out of school to take them to a dental appointment because that's one that you basically get issued with, seems rather counterproductive. Because if you're going to end up missing half school day for something that could be done after three o'clock or maybe six o'clock, I'm not sure how much kind of control we've got with that. But obviously we are kind of currently assessing the contracts around dentistry. So maybe it's something that we could push the, as it was.
Thank you. That's great. But I'm going to move on in here from Debbie because she's patiently waiting and taking down all our comments. We're giving you more and more to respond to, Debbie. So we'll bring you in at this point, if that's okay.
Okay. Good morning, everybody. So I did have some difficulties with my sound earlier on in Debbie's presentation. I managed to join partway through. I have got a bit of echoing going on, so I'm not quite sure what that's related to. So thank you for giving us the opportunity to respond to the report, which I received early this week. And obviously we were very much part of the workshop as well that was held back in July, which gave us lots more information from those that were in attendance to that. And some of that's been repeated this morning. Obviously, the recommendations in the report, you know, I can note those and I will be taking those back for discussion and review within the ICB. And looking at the further requests you've made for information. Some of that we may be able to produce quite easily. Some of it may take some more time and some of that is probably just not available to us. But what we'll do is come up with a response back against as much of that, those points that you've asked for as possible. And maybe some additional information to sort of help support the understanding of dentistry and actually where we're going and what we're planning to do based on lots of different elements of information we receive from these assessments and from what we're hearing and just what we know we've got to respond to nationally as well. I'm not going to repeat any of the figures that Debbie's already talked about this morning. I think you've got those in the reports and they can be interpreted. But I just wanted to be able to focus on maybe just a couple of headlines in terms of things that we are doing, which do correlate to some of the work that's mentioned in that report anyway, in terms of access and urgent, an urgent treatment. We don't tend to use the word emergency. That's tended to be for when people go to actually hospital via A and E etc. So we do tend to use the word urgent dental treatment or routine dental treatment in my world, really. So I think, I just wanted to just sort of mention that we are addressing quite a bit this year within the ICB. The ICB has invested quite a chunk of money this year into some additional pieces of work and additional projects. I think we mentioned some of those at the workshop as well. So some of you may already heard what I'm going to say, but it might be new to all those. But there's been real focus and commitment by the ICB to prioritise dentistry. The whole of the dental budget, whether it was already committed in contracts or not, has actually been ring fenced. And that's very much what my priority's been done to, to spend that money and keep it on dentistry across the South Yorkshire area. And we've been tackling that by setting up some new projects and initiatives with practices, utilising money that we've actually got back from their contracts where they've not delivered to actually try and do some extra stuff, an extra delivery and focusing. A big O, which has been touched on by a couple of you with your comments this morning, is children. That's a massive issue for us in South Yorkshire in terms of children, in terms of their oral health needs and some of the priorities we've got there. So we've actually got, and actually within Sheffield, I've just been checking my numbers, we've got five practices across Sheffield that have recently signed up to be part of a new initiative to actually focus at children of nought to five years and also their parents and carers if they're not already attached as a regular patient to a practice. And that's very much looking at the preventative side but also treatment and being able to sort of prioritise that group. And looking at working along local authority colleagues as well to actually identify family halls and sort of other settings where children are going at a nought to five area and doing some outreach and some pop-up events by an oral health worker on a practice, going to those and talking about dentistry and identifying people who've not got access to a dentist and actually bringing them into that practice and giving them the opportunity to actually access routine dental care for that child. I know it's nought to five, it's a start, but that is really a key group for us to actually start at that very young age where we know that some children are not accessing dentistry. So the focus of that has been on the more deprived areas, so those in IMD1 and IMD2 areas. It's only just recently started. We've got no figures other than we've actually got five practices who are committed to working on that project. And they're going to be what we class as two sessions a week, which is equivalent of seven hours a week, so a day basically, to focus on that piece of work. So we'll be monitoring and evaluating that as we go along with some data that we'll get back from them. So we will be able to feed back at a later date in terms of how successful that's been. Because it will have some ongoing evaluation and monitoring. Because we need to learn from that and look at actually what we can do and how we can move forward on that in, in moving forward. Because that's currently funded on a non-recurring basis. But obviously, if something like this does work, we actually want to find ways of doing something different. Another one for children, because this is such a key priority for us. We've been working with the South Yorkshire Ambassador Law Federation, Acute Federation Innovator Programme. And again, because children is a real issue, we've had true collaboration from all four trusts across South Yorkshire. And obviously within Sheffield, we've obviously got Sheffield as sort of a tertiary specialist centre as well, working together. And with the ICB have just committed a million pounds to that federation to support a proposal that they've put forward to us, to really do some work on that, to look at some quick wins in terms of getting some waiting lists down, but also working together and looking at developing and sharing expertise in a hub fashion to actually deal with those cases which are high volume but low complexity. This is about children needing extractions. And it's, and a lot of children don't just need one extraction, they need multiple. And some of those cases can be dealt with quite quickly and some are more complex. So this piece of work is just been supported through the summer. It's in its very early stages of planning and getting that up and running. But we're quite excited to actually see what that can actually achieve. So that's quite a substantial input really from the dental budget to support dentistry. We've also got, I mentioned at the workshop, we've got some other pilots to do with homeless, to do with transient groups or other health inclusion groups, such as asylum seekers, refugees, sex workers, the gypsy home, the traveller community, to try and deal with those sort of inequalities we've got and the additional difficulties they have in accessing services, in health service. So we've actually just got two more practices involved, working on that alongside the practice that was already doing homeless work in Sheffield as a pilot. So again, homeless has been running since the end of last year on Abidale Road, a practice there. And they've already seen, I think it's 59 individuals have actually gone through and had their first assessments. And some of those have obviously continued into receiving detailed dental treatment. And we've got, like I say, two more practices going to join that sort of model of working, linking very much with the charities and the other sort of community organisations, voluntary organisations across Sheffield who work with these individuals to support and sort of separate those individuals to pay to appointments. And the feedback is the homeless one's working really well at the minute. So we're hoping the transient group one will actually sort of take off just as well. So it's very early days on that experiment, but it's in place. And in terms of urgent care, we do have a commissioned urgent care service. But it's, it's, it's busting. It's, you know, the demand on it is huge. So what we've been doing is commissioning urgent access sessions from your primary care dental practices, those on the High Street, to actually support that pathway and provide some urgent care access. In Sheffield, we've actually got quite a number of actually involved in that. We've got 12 practices across Sheffield, but they're providing a number of sessions in their core contracted hours. Some of that will include Saturdays and Sundays. It doesn't include weekends. Their core contracts or whatever their contracted hours are, that might be a five o'clock finish, a six o'clock finish. But they're actually providing some urgent access for all patients, not just their regular patients. And some of those appointments also given to 111 to support that urgent care pathway as well. So we've got more appointments in the system for that. The route into those is either NHS 111 and your triage clinically to determine whether or not you need an urgent appointment or whether you actually need to be seen in primary care for a routine. If it's an urgent care need, obviously then you're given an appointment, ideally in your local area. Some people do have to travel though, unfortunately, if their appointments are just not available. And we've also got a number of practices across Sheffield. We've got 16 in Sheffield that we've supported to be able to over-deliver on their contract. So practices can normally deliver up to 102% of their contracted activity. The sort of rules around this, the policy book, if you like, and their contract means we've supported them to be able to deliver 110% of their contracted activity. So for some of those bigger contracts that we have, that's quite a substantial number of additional appointments they're able to deliver. And we've actually put a focus on those as well as being focused on new patients. So they should be seeing a higher percentage of new patients than they would have done normally. Somebody mentioned, I'm trying to get a lot of information here because I do need to be gone by 11. But I know somebody mentioned about accessing and how do we know which practices are actually seeing new patients? We don't have a list of those. They are available on the government's website, on nhs.net, where you can actually search then for practices that are saying that they're accepting new patients or they're accepting where their availability allows. And that just means that they've really got a waiting list. So when you ring them, you may actually be asked, you might be put on a waiting list. So you can actually be contacted when availability allows within those practices. I'm going to shut up now, just in case there's some questions.
I'm sure there are. I'm aware you've got nine minutes left and we must let you go. So we probably won't get through all the questions now, but we can stack them up. I'm going to bring Lucy in first because you haven't contributed yet. Lucy?
Morning, Debbie. It was two things. The first one's a quick question. You mentioned the five practices that had signed up to focus on children nought to five years. And I was wondering, is that sort of open access or is it referral only in the way that the flexible commissioning schemes were previously? That's the first question. And my second question just relates to something that is sort of referred to in the report in places, but also that we've heard more recently ourselves at Healthwatch, which relates to the scenario where people receive letters from their NHS dentist or an NHS dentist that they had accessed previously and are told not that the dentist is sending the, handing the contract back, but that a particular dentist within that setup is no longer providing NHS care. And consequently, they'll either have to go on the list to see somebody else who may only be able to offer a very limited range of appointments or they're offered a private plan as an alternative. So we heard at the workshop about how hard it is for people to understand the value of a private plan and what that is that they're being offered. So there's sort of two issues in that, really. Is it okay for NHS dentists to be writing to people actively, offering them a private plan when they've previously accessed the NHS provision? And secondly, where are we in terms of practices not handing contracts back but somehow changing the way that they're offering that NHS provision to people who had previously accessed it? If that makes sense?
Okay, so your first point about the child is open access. So some practices may look through their waiting list and pick out the children that are on that list that are nought to five and actually approach the parents that way. If somebody contacts the practice and it is because they've got a child and if it's one of those practices, then they'll be able to look at where they can fit those in. But actually, the sort of, I suppose the new element of that is about an all health champion going out and actually doing some links in directly with the community. And as I say, that's very much, we've had the local area, local authority, local authority leads working with us and linking in with those as well and giving those contacts through to those practices to actually go out and do that sort of face-to-face contact. So they can look and identify and then take the details and look to get them linked into that practice. So it's a bit of both, really. It's a bit of direct contact or, you know, you might just be in the right place at the right time with your child at a, you know, at a community family centre and identify that there's some children there and the worker can link them in. So it's very much a model that we're just piloting it, to be fair. And it's got, we've got to sort of see how that's working. And we'll be working quite closely in linking in with practices to sort of see how that's going to make sure they're actually doing the full range of it and not just picking people off their own list at the minute. We want them to actually do that community hub, that link into the community is better as well to sort of reach out, not just expect phone calls in. The bit about letters to, about NHS dentists. Dental practices will often have a mix of NHS and private and they're absolutely entitled to do that. They'll only be commissioned from us and under a contract for an element of NHS contracts. And that will vary in size from practice to practice. If a performer does decide that they, within that practice, they want to stop doing their NHS element and just do private, they're entitled to do that. If the practice can absorb those NHS patients with all the If the practice can absorb those NHS patients with all the performer in the practice. That's, that's the best thing really to do that. If they can, but if they can't, they do then sometimes have to let those patients go. But they are entitled still to offer that patient other options for care, whether that be pri, and that might be private. We can't control that, that, that is up to them as a business, as a, as a dental business really. We don't have this numbers of handbacks in, in our area. I think we've had one handback in the last 12 months from a practice purely because they stopped providing NHS care and wanted to do private. And that was in Sheffield and we've reallocated all that activity within that same patch within Sheffield. So we do reallocate it within the area and then in that situation, we would have written out to all those patients and said where it's been allocated and these are the practices you can contact. When it's just a performer dropping off within a practice of a few performers, we're not, we can't really do that. Because the, it, 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 those, sometimes the, the activity may be sliced up so much across other practices because it'll be a small amount. If they're handing an element of it back, we tend to just realign that across that area. So I'm afraid patients will then just need to find another practice in the area that would be willing to take on NHS patients. Can I just add one other thing regarding children? Because I think this is a really important thing from a safeguarding perspective. In that we do have a number of children that get appointments through the urgent care system through NHS 111. Who when they get there have actually, through their assessment to deal with that urgent need, the dental, dental person, the dentist looking at that identifies that child's got multiple needs. But can only deal with that urgent one at the time. And if that child doesn't have a dental, dental practice on a regular basis. We had a process of recently been able to signpost that patient, that patient's parent or carer to a, to a particular practice. We've tightened that up just in the last few weeks and actually the urgent care provider will now be referring that child, obviously with the parent's consent through to a flexible commissioning practice where we've got a number of those in, in your city. And it's done as a formal referral through. So then it's the, the practice picking up that referral that will then follow up with that, with that family to get that, that child into them. So they can do a full assessment, x-rays if necessary and do any onward referral for whatever reason that would be coming through as a clinical need. And that, and that was as a result of a safeguarding issue in the, in the Humber region where a child died. And part of the coroner's report was regarding poor oral health. So we've, we've just recently put that into, into practice.
Thank you Debbie, I know you're right up against the wire, so we're going to let you go even though members have got more questions. We'll obviously continue our deliberations here, but it's 10.59 and I know you've got another meeting at 11. So thank you ever so much for your time and no doubt we'll, we'll be continuing to be in contact with you. So thank you very much for your input.
That's fine, okay, thank you, bye bye.
Thank you. Okay, we can continue our discussion a bit further and there will be other ways to, for questions to be still posed. So bearing in mind that we have recommended to ourselves that we establish a working group. So there will be plenty more opportunity to follow up the work. But if there's anything else urgent today, we can spend a bit, a bit longer on this.
Thank you, just about the recommendations, 4.2 is bottom of page 17. I wanted to ask, but unfortunately she's gone, so about just that the NHS, I thought we do accept the recommendations. And if they would give some time scales for the report, have they provided a report with the further information? That, that is one of the recommend, the first bullet point. Oh, sorry, sorry.
She has, so Debbie has indicated, she's not able to formally accept our recommendations on behalf of the ICB today. But she has noted the recommendations in the report and is taking that away to discuss the next steps with her ICB colleagues.
So we haven't actually got.
It's not, it's not, even if she was still here, it's not possible for her to accept the recommendations right now.
I'll just agree on that, yes, and so it'd be useful to have times if they do recommend, accept them then.
We will seek another report from the ICB, yes.
Brilliant, yeah, okay. And then one of the, oh, two of things, should be very quick. The 4.2.2, it refers to all those marginalised groups and also the survey also was looking at marginalised groups, which is great. There's an omission which I think is the care leavers, which the council have accepted as, I think last December as a protected characteristic, so maybe we could, appreciate it wouldn't last in the survey, but going forward, I think they should be included. Okay, and the last.
Sorry, could I just respond to that? Because I, I wouldn't want you to think that that was a exclusive list. That's, I think personally, I would say that the, the groups that the working group would like to target should be discussed, so in terms of reference of the working group and everything will be discussed. And the marginalised groups that are appropriate to target should be discussed and agreed by that working group, I think. So they were just examples that came up during the workshop and the surveys, they weren't meant to be, it wasn't meant to be exclusive.
Okay, thanks, I think care leavers probably are a group that maybe don't access healthcare when they, they could, that's a speculation, we sort of have the information on it. And lastly, both recommendations 4.2.1 and 4.2.2, that's for the health people and for us. It talks about lobbying national governments, so it's going to be useful to have copies of correspondence about that. Thank you.
Mick.
Thanks, I'll try to be brief and apologize again if it's covered. As I say, I've been largely absent in the last two or three weeks for health reasons. The, one of the complaints that I've heard quite frequently is people being thrown off of lists because they didn't turn up to appointments during Covid. And that seems harsh to say the least. There doesn't seem to be any appeal system to say, hang on a minute, you know, this is, this is just not right. The other is, dare I, dare I raise the issue whether there's going to be a serious discussion about fluoridisation of the water system? Because I'm, personally, I'll put my, you know, neck out, I'm completely in favour of doing that. And as far as I'm aware, nobody has grown a second head as a result of fluoride being in, in, in the water system. And the other is the funding of dentistry across the country. If we could have an explanation of how it's allocated. And as politicians, particularly now that we've got a, a government that might actually talk to us. Perhaps we could have a discussion about whether or not that, the funding for that is directed to the right places and is fairly distributed. That's, those are my points.
Thanks Mick, I think, I think it should be very much in the remit of the working group to keep in mind that element of dialogue with the government. I think that should be very, very much, we've said lobbying of national government, hopefully it's less lobbying and more discussing. Now, and where streeting has been really clear that reform of the dental contract is an imperative. So that, that door is open and I think it's part of the remit of this subcommittee. And, and as we're in the fourth largest city in England. I think we do have something to say and our evidence gathering can be actually quite useful. Particularly as the city of Sheffield has such a disparity between different communities in terms of health inequalities. So I think we should tell our story and I think we should expect that to, to be part of the evidence gathering of the government in, in starting the work on reforming that contract. So that, that's very much at the forefront of my mind in setting up this working group. Are there any other comments or questions at this point? So we know that Debbie on behalf of the ICB has noted the recommendations that we have posed in 4.1 in this report. And that the ICB will be taking those to consider. As Debbie was close, she couldn't provide responses to those today, but that has been undertaken. And then 4.2 is the, for this subcommittee to move on to stage two of this project in examining access to dentistry in Sheffield by establishing a working group to oversee further reviews. And then there's, there is a list, it's not, as Debbie said, as Deb said here, it's not exhaustive, it's a suggestion. And it would be open to that working group to set its own remit. And to, to spend time initially discussing that. So members of this subcommittee are of course all invited to be part of the working group. It could be a working group that exactly parallels the makeup of the subcommittee. But it will provide us more, more time and scope to examine the subject in more detail. And scope also to co-opt people to that working group who might have lived experience or experienced as professionals that could be extremely useful to us. So are we in agreement to establish that working group as soon as possible and get it up and running? Yep, agreed, thank you and noted. Debbie, to crack on with that as quickly as we can so we can keep the pace up on that work. Great, thank you very much everybody on that item. Just take a slight moment to breathe and drink a bit of water, just take 30 seconds. Okay, we're just welcoming our next line up of guests. While we do that, just, I'm just going back to our recommendations for the previous report. And I should have picked up that we are agreeing to make any amendments necessary to the report. And some members have mentioned things that need amending. And I think we can agree to take a final roundup of comments on the actual report and any corrections that members would like to request, if we could maybe do that by the end of next week. Deb, is that reasonable? By the end of next week, any final comments on the report please? And then we can agree the final format of the report, okay, thank you. So we have our next item, which is a report on adult autism and ADHD pathways. This was an item requested by one of our members, Sophie Thornton. And a little while ago, so we've, colleagues have had some time to pull a report together for us, which we're very grateful for. And so we're going to hear about some of the, some of what's going on in those pathways and particularly our concerns. The reason why we asked for a report was about waiting times. So that's somewhat the focus of our discussion today. So we have, I have the wrong glasses on, so can you introduce yourselves and tell us your roles please?
So I'm Alison Egerton, I'm a service manager working for the Higher Specialist Services at Sheffield Health and Social Care. Of which the Sheffield Adult Autism and Neurodevelopmental Service is one of my teams that I support.
Hello, I'm Dr Robert Verity, I'm a consultant psychiatrist and I'm clinical director for the services that we're discussing today.
Hi, I'm Holly Johnson, I'm a clinical psychologist and also clinical lead for the Sheffield Adult Autism and Neurodevelopmental Service.
Hi, I'm Adele Rowett, I'm the head of service for rehab and specialist services where this service fits under for SHSC.
Hi everyone, I'm Miss Tuke, I work in NHS South Yorkshire and Greater Care Board. I'm just here to provide any ICB support if needed.
Thank you, I'm aware you're sharing microphones a bit, if, if, when you, if you can just group round it a bit more. Can we activate that spare mic? Okay, so I think we're going to hear about the autism and ADHD pathways with some degree of separation. And then in our discussion, I'm sure there'll be crossover, so I don't think we'll take one then the other as such. If you'd both like to present and then we'll take it all together.
So you've kind of said pretty much how I was going to open, which was that we were asked to talk about our service. We summarise it as SANS, so that SANS, just to make it easier that we're not saying the full names, when I say SANS, that's the service. So yeah, we were due to come in July, I believe, but there was some discrepancy between whether ADHD and autism were the same pathway within the service and they're not. So we just kind of start there, that they're two very distinct, separate pathways, but they are both seen within the SANS service. So they are separate teams and separate pathways. SANS was recommissioned in 2013 as an ASD service, so autism diagnostic service. Oh, ADS, I muddled up my words, sorry. Autistic people that are obviously seen within the service may have comorbidities with ADHD also. So it could be a referral for both diagnostics and therefore treatment. So for ASD, it's a support diagnostic support and ADHD is typically medication that people would go on to following diagnosis. As well as serving Sheffield, the SANS service does receive referrals nationally. So it's not just Sheffield, so when we talk about wait numbers, I will be very clear and I'm happy to differentiate the weight between just Sheffield and national, should you want those broken down. Just to term, on terminology, so I know that we've, we've kind of edited the report, that the term autistic person is preferred. So we'll try to use kind of neuro affirmative language throughout this report. So our SANS service is commissioned to provide diagnostic assessment and a post diagnostic follow-up for autism and medication for ADHD. Prior to 2018, the ADHD part of the pathway was delivered by our single point of access team within Sheffield Health and Social Care. There was a restructure at the time, the community teams were reorganised and the ADHD part of it was moved over to the SANS service. I believe there was some kind of funding that followed that, but it, it was kind of agreed between that, that's how it would remain. There has been difficulties within the ADHD in retaining staff. So there's been very little numbers within the ADHD pathway within SHSC since then. The NICE guidance for ADHD assessments requires diagnostic and a drug-based intervention for people who are moditer, moderately severely impacted by their symptoms. And nationally, I think we've all kind of heard the unprecedented demand that has come for ADHD. So the increase is, has been unmanageable with the resource that we currently have. I know there's patient choice in terms of right to choose where people are seen. So I think nationally, ADHD services are feeling this increase in demand. And I know that the ICB has looked at private providers to support that awareness. I'll pass on to.
Okay, so I'm going to talk a little bit about the autism pathway and what is autism to start with in case any of you are not familiar with the term. So autism is a lifelong neurodevelopmental condition, or some people prefer to think of it as a difference, neurodevelopmental difference. And which impacts on, on them in a few different ways. So autistic people. So autistic people may act in a different way to non-autistic people, and they might find it hard to communicate and interact with people, find it hard to understand how other people think or feel. They might find things like bright lights or loud noises overwhelming due to sensory differences. They often get upset or anxious about unfamiliar situations, social events, changes to routine. They might have difficulties with processing and understanding information and often have difficulties with kind of what we call kind of reflexibility of thought, which might make people somewhat repetitive or preferring to do the things in the same way each time and struggling if things change, which mean that they can't do that. So our autism pathway, it's a multidisciplinary team, psychology-led, and we're currently fully staffed to that workforce model. So we have psychologists, speech therapists, occupational therapists, and more recently, peer support workers working in that pathway. And within the autism pathway, we have been successful in attaining our commission targets. So we have targets of how many assessments that we're expected to complete each year and how many follow-up appointments. And so the last financial year, we met our commission targets. I guess one of the problems is we get more referrals than those numbers, so often that's where the waiting list issues come from. We had, as Alison said, we have always been a national service, but as other local services have commissioned their own specialist autism and ADHD pathways, it's meant that we've received fewer national referrals. So for example, Rotherham, Doncaster, Barnsley, Rotherham and Barnsley both have their own services now, so that means referrals have been reduced from out of area. And at the end of July this year, the number of Sheffield residents waiting for an autism assessment with our service was 996, with an average waiting time of 65 weeks, so just over a year. While it's still longer than we would like, it is a significant reduction in waiting times for autism since, over the past kind of couple of years. So we're quite pleased with the progress we've made. Obviously, we'd like to get it down shorter as well. So the autism model is benchmarked against the NICE guidance in terms of how we conduct our assessments, and also we kind of benchmark against other national specialist services to make sure we're kind of aligned in terms of model. Whilst we're primarily around autism diagnosis, we can offer a limited amount of post-diagnostic follow-up, and I'll talk a lot bit more about that in a later slide. Some of the more recent kind of developments in the services, there's been some investment to provide support for people on the waiting list, so that's provided by voluntary sector organisations that we've partnered up with. So we're just at the end of a six-month pilot phase with that, which is going to be evaluated to see if it's something that we'd continue. I'll again say a bit more about it later. And we've also had investment for autism peer support workers, which enables people to have support from somebody with lived experience of an autism diagnosis. So the autism assessment process, so all of our referrals are triaged against, so the DSM-IV, so that's a diagnostic and statistical manual, which kind of stipulates what the criteria for a diagnosis is, so that's the model that we use. So we triage all our referrals, looking for traits within those criteria, and we gather information from individuals at the point of referral. So we send out a big pack of questionnaires and we ask people to complete those and return them back. And then when that information comes back, we'll make a decision about whether or not that person's likely to go on to receive a diagnosis, and if so, we'd add them to the waiting list. If we don't think at that point there's enough information, and we've, you know, tried to gather additional information if we need to, we would decline the referral and make other recommendations, so we're not asking people to wait a long time for something that's not going to be useful for them. So yeah, within that, we have support to complete the questionnaires by our assistant psychologist, because we recognise not everybody finds it easy to fill out lots of forms. And when the referral is accepted to the waiting list, we send out that signposting letter about the voluntary sector organisations where they can receive support, because one of the things that we've found is that there's a bit of a myth that people need to wait for the diagnosis or their official report before they can access certain types of support, where there's very few actually interventions or support options that somebody needs an official diagnosis for. So people can be accessing, say, reasonable adjustments in employment or education without formal diagnosis. So we're just trying to kind of publicise that, so people aren't disadvantaged by the waiting list. So yeah, if we would decline the referral, we'll try and provide an alternative recommendation based on the information that we've had at referral. And then our assessments are completed by qualified autism assessment practitioners, so that might be a clinical psychologist, a speech therapist, or an ATO, or a combination of those different professions. And we have a MDT, so that's a multidisciplinary team meeting where we discuss diagnostic decision-making if we're unsure. So our standard assessment offers a three-hour-long assessment appointment and a post-diagnostic follow-up, which is a bit bi-opting really, so not everybody chooses to take that follow-up appointment. And sometimes we need to offer multiple assessments. For example, if we're wondering if somebody might also have a learning disability or other mental health difficulties, we'd offer more of a holistic assessment then. So we've just included a bit of information about how we've addressed the autism waiting times, because I mentioned that we have reduced them in recent years. It's not been one thing, I don't think, and like I said, it's still, they're still not at a level we're truly happy with, but better than they were. So staff retention has been one of the main things, so having staff that have stayed and continued to work in the service. And one of the things that's helped with retention is having, rather than having one professional group that can only do the assessments, we have a generic specialist autism assessment practitioner post where people from different professional groups could apply, as long as they've got the right qualifications. And then we offer a one-clinician, one-appointment assessment model, so that's a bit different to some other specialist autism services where they might have more of a multidisciplinary assessment process, where somebody's seen by lots of different professionals as part of one assessment. So as standard, that's the way we offer the assessments, but like I said, sometimes we will offer multiple appointments if we need to. And it's just to ensure that we're operating kind of the most efficient model as we can, whilst staying compliant with the national guidance. We have quite kind of clear job plans in terms of individual staff assessment targets, so making sure that they're on track with the number of assessments that they need to complete each week or each month. We have a process to reduce DNA rates, so that's people who just don't show up for their appointment. So we do that by, when somebody gets to the top of the waiting list, our admin team will ring people up and then offer them a range of a few different options of appointments to find one that suits them, rather than just sending out the next available appointment. And that does make the DNA rate lower, we've found. That changed to the triage process where we're sending out the questionnaires, that's quite a new development that we've worked on, and that has meant that fewer people are being added to the list that wouldn't kind of go on to receiving a diagnosis at the end. So I think we've found that around 40% of people don't actually, often don't return the questionnaires, even if we've contacted them and offered support, often because actually once they get the questionnaires, they're thinking, well, maybe this isn't for me, or they've not consented to the referral in the first place, so that's helped as well. Yeah, and then we work with our kind of other SHSC services by providing consultation to other professionals. So if somebody's considering a referral for one of their clients in, say, the mental health team, we would offer a consultation appointment to help them think through whether that assessment is appropriate, and in some cases, we'd support that other clinician to do the assessment in their own team, rather than them having to be referred to us. Yeah, and then, you know, the waiting well support that we've just talked about, so acknowledging, yes, you will be waiting a long time, but actually it doesn't stop you from going ahead and accessing support whilst you're waiting. So this is just a bit about the waiting well work, I've kind of covered it. The poster just talks about the partner agencies that we've been working with. So the voluntary partner agencies we've been working with include SACMA, Fervell Community Hub, Darnall Wellbeing, Disability Sheffield, Autism Plus, and Percy Street, and those services have received specific funding and training to work with autistic adults or people who might be autistic. And like I said, we're kind of just at the evaluation stage now, so hopefully that information can be available soon. In terms of our post-diagnostic support pathway for autism, yeah, like I said, everybody diagnosed is offered a one-to-one post-diagnostic follow-up. And then we run a group, a psychoeducation group, which covers things like what is autism, anxiety, sensory issues, emotions. So we like people to do that if they can, because we find that, you know, information is often, the first step isn't in being able to help yourself, so people understand what they're struggling with, and they can learn some strategies often, that's the most helpful intervention. And at the end of the group, we'd offer a review where we might then consider somebody for more specialist intervention. So we've got a very small remit for these specialist interventions, that's why we try and kind of offer them in a group format, so in terms of psychological intervention, speech and language therapy, occupational therapy, or peer support interventions. Oh, and that's the end of the autism bit. So I'll hand over to Rob for ADHD.
Thank you. So I think first of all, talking about what is attention deficit hyperactivity disorder, or ADHD as it's commonly known. It affects people's concentration and behaviour. People with ADHD can seem restless. They may act on impulse, they may have trouble concentrating. And this is something that starts when people are young, it's not something that you develop in adulthood, it starts in childhood. Often it's noticed when people are under 12, but sometimes it's diagnosed a little bit later. The symptoms are sometimes diagnosed in adulthood itself, but they must have been there since childhood. They've got to start, and it's a neurodevelopmental condition. Sometimes the symptoms can improve with age. So a child that had ADHD really quite severely, as they get older, they may mature, and those symptoms may not be as severe. But in some cases, it can continue into adulthood, and this is what we're seeing and what we're picking up now. ADHD leads to other problems. It can affect your sleep. Lots of people with ADHD have anxiety. And because of the experiences that people have as they're growing up, it can lead to conditions such as depression, it can lead to pretty poor work and social adjustment as well. So it can be a condition that can really affect people, not only with the symptoms, but in all aspects of their life going forwards. When we're diagnosing ADHD, we look at, again, the DSM-IV criteria, as Holly spoke about, but there's also some NICE guidance on ADHD. So we look at, were the symptoms there in childhood? Has it affected more than one area of your life? What's the impact of these conditions on your life? Many people may have the symptoms, but it may not affect them. They may be able to live with their symptoms, but sometimes it adversely affects how they interact, how they work, how they get on with other people. And from the NICE guidance, it requires a specialist to diagnose. So usually within our trust, we've got medical doctors who are psychiatrists, and we do the diagnosis. The prescription of medications for ADHD requires specialist prescriptions from a specialist doctor, from someone who has experience in the training and in prescribing these medications. When the medication is prescribed and when someone's stable on it, however, we can then hand it over to our primary care colleagues to continue that prescription and continue that care with the feedback, knowing that they can get specialist care if needed. So the ADHD pathway that we've currently got, in 2021, the services were changed, and as you've heard, they moved from our SANS, from our single point of access service into our SANS service. We recruited nurses, so we wanted to have a consultant-led service that had worked with many, many nurses to help increase the number of assessments and medication appointments that we can do. However, we have problems with recruitment and retention of staff. So currently, we've got a half-time consultant and a whole-time speciality doctor. We've conducted a review of the waiting list, which has identified a significant number of referrals who don't meet the NICE guidance. So this has informed our future development, so we're going to look at triaging all the referrals that come in. So nationally, ADHD waiting times and the number of referrals have increased exponentially. We're working to find a system to find solutions for meeting that need. This is in partnership with South Yorkshire Mental Health Learning Disability and Autism Provider Collaborative. And the future direction is about developing a mainstream service that's accessible and We're trying to develop all our mainstream services so they respond to people with ADHD. So anyone who comes into contact with Sheffield services, Sheffield Mental Health Services, will be screened for ADHD, and if necessary, we will look at these people and make diagnoses and give treatment options. This is akin to what we do with people with learning disability, the green light working. So if you're found to have a problem, it can be dealt with in the service that you come to. Sorry. So, sorry, you've just got a bit of a... So demand nationally has increased, as we've talked about for ADHD and ASD assessments. In Sheffield, in 2018, we had 200 referrals per year. Currently, it's around 260 per month. So unfortunately, our service hasn't increased by 12 times the number of staff. The number of people we've got waiting as of the end of July in Sheffield for ASD was 996, for ADHD was 3,616. We've also got some national referrals in, and these are 4,298. However, 3,832 of these are from Derbyshire. National referrals come as the right-to-choice options or from the Derbyshire contract, and the Derbyshire contract is currently under review. So the waiting times. Because we've got a high number of referrals, the waiting times, you know, have been quite At the moment, we've been offering medication appointments for people who have been seen and have got a confirmed diagnosis of ADHD. So we were dealing with people that had already maybe been seen within our service or seen somewhere else and had got a confirmed diagnosis, and we were starting these people off on We've now addressed this, and we're going to be starting the brand-new assessment of people in Sheffield with ADHD. The current waiting time for an ADHD assessment is approximately six years. So in summary, we've got a long waiting list and we've got long waiting times. Our capacity to assess and diagnose and start treatment is under pressure because of the large number of referrals that we get in, but we are doing this. We also work with our GPs in shared care arrangements. So all of those that have been seen within Sheffield and have been treated for ADHD as adults, currently we can refer back to GPs with these shared care arrangements.
Could I just elaborate a little bit more on the data? So Rob obviously mentioned there about the Derbyshire contract being under review, that is actually due to end at the end of October, so this, I can't remember the exact number, but I will go and get it. 3,832. They will obviously be transferred over to Derbyshire, that will have a dramatic effect on our waitlist, and we are doing waitlist validation of our waitlist after that to sense check whether people still need an assessment, have they been seen elsewhere, obviously at the length of time. And just to explain that six years wait time, obviously because the service has not been delivering assessments due to the decision of not having ADHD staff, it's impossible to do an average assessment to referral time, because obviously the data for the last year has been... the data for the last year has been, has been limited assessments. So that is the longest wait on the system. So some of those may, may be outliers in the sense of there may be a few people that are, you know, still waiting from 2018. But it is not that everybody waits six years. It's, it's been defined that the only way we can define wait is the longest wait on the list. So I just wanted to, I know because that feels hard when you hear six years. It's not that everyone will wait six years. Do you want us to carry on with the presentation or take questions? Have you finished your presentation? No, carry on please.
So to address our waiting times, we've reintroduced assessment appointments. We're recruiting. We've got some, some nurse vacancies at the moment that we're hoping to recruit in. We set up dedicated screening and triage times within our clinic structures. We're developing a pre-assessment, a pre-assessment questionnaire to help assess the appropriateness, appropriateness of referrals. So hopefully we don't get as many inappropriate referrals. And we're reviewing our, our waiting list to ensure the accuracy on whether an assessment is, is still required. So mitigations. We're going to carry out the plans identified to address the ADHD waiting list as outlined above. We've got reduction of waiting lists for medication assessment and titration of those who have been previously receiving an ADHD diagnosis. And this has now been completed. We're working on a waiting well offer and waiting list interventions. Throughout the trust, we're, we're transforming our services and we're going to continue to do this for our ADHD service. And we're working alongside our partners to influence, to influence the system ownership of the problem of high demand and low capacity across the system. So ADHD mitigations from our South Yorkshire partners. As we said, this, 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 this high demand, low capacity across South Yorkshire. A tiered service model is being proposed and presented by SHSC to the Mental Health Learning Disability and Autism Board in June of last year, and it was a agreed in principle. This isn't at, at the point of progression yet, due to the transformation programmes that are currently running in our PCMHTs and in SHSC. We're hoping that an assessment service will eventually be delegated to the CMHTs and the PCMHTs, but we're not at this point yet.
Sorry, just explain those letters.
Oh, so PCMHT is the primary care mental health transformation.
And the CMHT are our, our community mental health teams. Yeah, thank you for pointing that out. And we're also going to work with our partners to review the offer of non-pharmacological and psychoeducation pathways to support people living with ADHD.
There are some graphs on there, but I'm not going to talk through them because they, unless you want me to. There is an appendix if anybody does have any questions, but we've talked about, because this is about waiting times. We thought the important thing was to stress that numbers on the wait times and then what we're doing to obviously mitigate the wait times. But we've just put data in there for context to cover the last kind of couple of years.
Can I just clarify the last point that you talked about, Robert? So it just went a bit fast for me. You're hoping that an assessment service can be developed. It just, can you just take us back over that?
Right, so I think as we spoke about before, sometime there are a large number of referrals that come in. Some of these are appropriate for a specialist service. Some of these we think could be dealt with probably within our community mental health teams or within the primary care mental health teams that are being developed in Sheffield. So instead of people having to go all the way through to and wait for spec, wait for psychiatrists, wait for, and to get that assessment, some of the assessments we think could be done at a, at a lower level, at an easier level, because some of the cases are less complex than some of the others. We're hoping that this can be developed with our primary care partners. And this will take, remove some of the demand. We also spoke a little bit about, as Holly did for the ASD with...
Sorry, just to clarify even more on that. You, you're talking about full diagnosis, but outside of the specialist service?
We're talking about, possibly with diagnosis within, within, within primary care mental health services. So these are linked to secondary services. They sit between primary care and secondary care. They, they have input from specialist mental health, specialist mental health professionals, but they sit within a GP, usually within a GP practice. So you could potentially get a more localised service there.
Okay, it's a lot of information. Thanks for presenting it as quickly as you can. It's a lot to take in. So we'll open it up to questions from members. So I'm going to take an initial list of four, if that's okay, because I'm sure there's going to be lots of questions popping up. So we've got Toby, Lucy, Sophie and Laura first.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks very much for the report. Yeah, I've got a plea first and then three questions. The plea is just in terms of reports, could you please put paragraph numbers in the paragraphs? Because otherwise it's hard to navigate and quote things. So the first question is, I've got three questions. Page seven, under the title Autism Assessment Process, it says all referrals for autism assessment are triaged against the Diagnostic and Statistical Manual V DSM V criteria. Just a bit of background on me, I have got some lived experience as a parent of, of divergent children. One of whom's got a significant autism diagnosis. The question is, could we have, I'd certainly like to see a copy of what that criteria looks like. The Diagnostic and Statistical Manual, I did a search for it and I found an American document. It'd be useful just to...
Yeah, it is, it is an American manual. So if you do just, I'm happy to send it over, but you can just Google the DSM five criteria for autism or ADHD. And you should be able to find that quite, quite easily. And so it's just the, it's the criteria that we use when we're making a diagnosis.
Okay. In terms of the triage process, is it against the severity of symptom? It assumes it's against severity of symptoms, but is it also against the need of the, of the child and the fam, or if it's the person and their, their family? And do children get special preference or is this not including children?
Yeah. So, so yeah, the autism service is, we take referrals from 16 plus. So it is adults and, well, young people. The, the criteria that we use at the, the triage stage because we want to see evidence that there's difficulties in, in all the domains that we'd need at, at an assessment and obviously we expand on that assessment. So we look at, yeah, do they, are the symptoms there, are the difficulties or the traits there? Are they having an impact? So the way that our referral forms are worded, you know, how are these difficulties impacting on your life currently? And so yes, maybe the family, education, employment, mental health. And were they evident in childhood? So that's the other criteria that Rob talked about with ADHD, same as with autism. And the children, sorry, repeat your question about children, sorry.
Well, about the children on COVID, so...
Yeah, so it's not, so yeah, we would take people or people that might be transitioned from, from the CAMHS service, children services as well.
Okay. Next one is just... Two more, two more, one very quick. So page eight, title is how we have addressed autism assessment waiting times. And the sentence I'm sort of asking a question about says, "Our specialist autism assessment petitioner posts are recruited based on the skills and experience of the individual, rather than relying on recruiting from a specific professional group." So my question is, I presume they must be qualified to make a diagnosis. They must, you, you must have some criteria around a suitable professional to...
So they are, so historically we've had, so for example, only psychiatrists and psychologists doing the assessments. But actually we've broadened that out to include professions such as speech and language therapists and occupational therapists. So they've got a core profession and then we will train them up to do the autism assessments as part of that. Because we just find that we were able to recruit and retain staff more if we widened the net, as it were.
Okay, but it would be a proper diagnosis.
They would, yeah. Yeah, sometimes we, we consider it referral if we feel like a psychologist would be better placed to see a, a particular person based on the referral information or sometimes a speech therapist or the OT as well, so.
Okay. The last question is just about the graphs at the back. They're for quite a limited period, I think you were referring back to about 2018. But the graphs appear to quite, show quite stable numbers. There's no trend upwards particularly on any of them. So just the question is presumably things have stabilised and that's a good thing.
Are you able to say, because there's quite a few, which one in particular, because they're looking at different things with each of those, so...
Well, just, so if you look at page 15, referrals for ASD, that's actually on a downward trend slightly. And none of the other ones really show any over time, any big increase. Obviously, this is only over the last year or so.
Holly kind of alluded to in her presentation that due to the Barnsley Rotherham, that their build-up of ASD services, the referrals and demand for Sheffield ASD has declined. So that, that, that has stabilised. In terms of the data, I mean, we, we just chose to go from April 23 because that's from when we kind of decided that we were doing medication only. So that's, but we can go back further so that you can see a larger trend for ADHD and ASD. Should you want that information, I'm happy to go back further.
Yeah. I'm wondering, is the trend, is it just flattening out and it's going to carry on going up to think of?
I, I think in terms of demand for ADHD, it's definitely increasing. It's probably stabilised a little bit at the minute at around, like I say, 200 per month, but it used to be 200 per year. So it, it has drastically increased since around 2021. 2018, when it moved from SPA, yeah.
It's been like inflation, prices have gone up. Inflation's down, but the prices are still up.
So we can obviously extend those graphs if you wish, but then it would be a, a huge timeframe. So we just kind of, yeah. So happy to provide that afterwards if you need that.
That's, that's fine.
I guess as well, looking back further, further back than 2023, you are looking at particular effects of COVID in the graphs. So it's sometimes useful not to include those periods when you're looking at a more recent trend because it can skew it, can't it?
Yeah, I mean, we've not included it for the purpose of this report, but typically at SHSC we do use SPC charts. So the trend analysis where we'll highlight statistical process charts. So we can clearly kind of pinpoint where, you know, that's directly affected by COVID, but yeah.
Okay, Lucy.
Thank you. So I was wanting to ask a question about the ADHD provision and the waiting list particularly. It's really good to hear about the measures that you've got planned and putting in place to address that situation. And I think we'd all recognise the enormously challenging situation that you've been sort of had to deal with in regards to the huge increase in referrals. So just to sort of put that in context. But just sort of looking at the history of this, obviously it's, it's quite clear there's a period of time and you've described yourself where those assessments were actually paused at the same time as they were kind of going through the roof. And I'm just wondering, wondering in terms of patients, people who were on that list, what communication there was with them about that and just about the sort of transparency of that. So as Healthwatch, we had no idea that assessments completely weren't happening for a period of time. I don't think the people that were coming to us asking about ADHD waiting times were aware of that. It wasn't something that was generally out in the sort of public domain. So I guess I'm just curious about how and where that decision was made, what the oversight was, but really importantly, what the communication was with patients about that so that they could understand what it might mean for them. And I was pleased, I checked that the information is on your website now about some of those challenges and the context, which is really good to see. But what was considered previously in respect to that?
So it's hard, because I've only started working with the service directly since April this year. So it's hard for me to kind of, but from what I'm aware of. Yeah, so the, the decision was made obviously due to the staff retention. So there, there was no kind of model other than, so yeah, the decision was made that we had consultant and specialty doctors. So we would prioritise those that had already had a diagnosis and needed medication and review of needs. I believe it was, there was some communications on the website, but I don't think it was as probably detailed as it is now. We have refreshed the detail. So I think as people queried and responded, it was communicated. And I think there was some narrative on the website. I can try and retrieve that to see what it was, but yeah, I don't know if Holly knows.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, it's a really good question and I have been not directly involved in the ADHD pathway, but kind of, you know, in the service more and on the autism side when all of this is happening. It's one of the things that ourselves and the staff have struggled with, especially our admin staff as well, of wanting to be able to give really clear information to people ringing up. But there were, during that time, so many things, things were changing so quickly that it was really difficult to give a clear and accurate information. So my understanding of it was the decision to stop doing assessments was made to, for a fixed period of time to work through the backlog of medication. But the, the issue was that during that time, we continued to receive referrals for medication for people that perhaps had already been on our waiting list for assessment, but then had gone maybe private and then needed to come back for their treatment. So what was supposed to be a time limited piece, pause and a piece of work ended and then retention, staff retention problems happened, ended up being extended for much longer than I think was ever intended. And the people that made those decisions aren't here today, so I can't speak for them. And so there was a period of, of, of lack of clarity, I think, for us as much as there were for, for service users. And yeah, I don't think it was as clear and transparent, but I think we are, that's something that we're really keen to work on at the minute. Sometimes it's hard, isn't it, to be able to give people that information but not be able to answer the follow-up questions that are likely to come as well. So that's something we're mindful of. So if we were to say, yes, the assessments have paused, but weren't able to give them the information of, well, actually, yes, and then they'll start on this date and then you'll definitely be seen by then. It kind of, it's that decision, isn't it? If some information can sometimes be worse than no information at all. So there were those considerations and discussions happening and I think lots of things happened, which meant that it was a bit outside of our control, some of it. Does that, yeah, I don't know if that helps at all.
Yeah, thank you. It, it kind of does, I guess. I'm not so much interested in going forensically over the history of what was said when, but more about the sort of learning point, about how important it is for people on waiting lists to get good communication about. And I know it's hard to give a date, the length of time and so on, but I think the better that communication can be, you know, the more helpful that is for people. So I'd really want us to take that away from this.
I absolutely agree. As we've come into the service later and I think this is one of the things that, that we are now seriously looking at and looking at that communication with people on our waiting list. And letters are going to be going out to people, asking them about the service and informing them about the changes, as well as the changes that have been made on the website, as Holly mentioned.
Thanks for that. I, I think this, this is to my mind, something that probably ought to have come under the site of the scrutiny committee because it does represent the service change and it's quite a significant one. And normally that sort of thing would come, would come to the scrutiny committee where, you know, and we've got Lucy from Healthwatch, who is expert on how to handle patient communications and what should be expected of that. So we can actually be useful. It's, it's not that, you know, you're not going to the headmaster's office and confessing that you've got to shut down a service or something. It is, it, we're part, we're a useful part of the, of the process because we have, you know, we have certain, we can make certain requirements of the ICB to come and talk to us about things and we can scrutinise consultation processes and whether there ought to be public consultation. And, and to me, this does look like something that should have probably come to us. So I, we, we will follow that up with, with the relevant person at the ICB and ask why that didn't happen. So we, we don't need to quiz you anymore about it. So you're not necessarily directly involved in that decision, but just to say we will probably follow that up with, with the ICB directly.
Ruth, and just obviously from the ICB mentality myself, I can feed that back to colleagues as well and we can get a response back to you on that, a joint response on that. So thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I have a few questions, Chair, so I'd appreciate a little bit of, a little bit of forgiveness in advance as I had requested this as well. I do have one, one question on the autism and the rest of them are on the ADHD pathway. So I'll start with the autism question if that's okay. Just as overall the peer support... Um, just as overall the peer support and the waiting well within the service seems to be something that is is working relatively well. Um, my only comment would be that the peer support inbox seems to be something that requires service users to come to you. But you do detail a bit more proactivity later in the report with that. So do you have patient feedback on that waiting well and peer support and what does that look like?
Um, thanks, Sophie, so the, they're both brand new, so the the waiting well support in voluntary sector. That's, like I said, we kind of, we've just finished the six month pilot period, pilot period and that's been evaluated. So we're not leading on that, actually, it's been led by SAPAN, so the Sheffield Autism Partnership Network. And Katie Drinkwater is leading on that from voluntary, voluntary sector. But yeah, we're, I'm looking forward to hearing the the feedback and I'm I'm assuming they are considering taking and getting, gathering feedback from. And service users, but I will flag that as well. And peer support pathway, so that's brand new as well, so our peer support workers have been in post less than a year. Um, and during that time, we've been kind of co-producing the the pathway in terms of what that looks like. So up until now, the peer support workers have been focusing on our group interventions. And we do gather feedback from the group interventions routinely, so we can share that as well. The one to one peer support is something that's a bit newer in terms of our development, so that kind of, you know, working with people that are newly diagnosed on a one to one basis. Or on the waiting list, we're not really up and running enough to be at this age of gathering feedback, but we, yeah, that's definitely something that we will do, so we can share that when it's ready.
Thank you, um, so moving to the ADHD pathway. First and foremost, a quick question really about the Derbyshire referrals, obviously you mentioned about the three, three thousand eight hundred. Um, of patients that have been waiting potentially for up to six years for a referral into this service. And then now that contract's going to end in twenty twenty four, is there new local provision that is going to be, you know, more locally in Derbyshire for them? Or are they going to have to then?
So we are working closely with Derbyshire ICB, um, I'm aware, I don't think, I don't know if the ADHD has been fully set up. But they are, they're working on an ADHD provision. Um, the communication and the message that we've had with Derbyshire ICB is that wherever possible, referral dates will still remain. So it's not that they would have to go back to the beginning of the queue, that that they would honour the referral date. So that's definitely, that's definitely our communication now, is that, you know, please don't worry, your referral date will be honoured with the new provision.
Okay, thank you, um.
Sophie, do you want to, can I just ask a follow up on that?
Yeah, absolutely.
If those patients, that's a lot of patients, if they're going back to Derbyshire. Um, are they then queue jumping effectively the other patients that are already sitting under Derbyshire's waiting list?
Oh, sorry, keep forgetting the button. Um, I don't think they have a Derbyshire provision at the minute, we we are contracted to do that, so so it it. Yeah, so Derbyshire don't have the service at the minute, so it's not as if they would override anybody, they would just move into the new offer that Derbyshire are providing.
Yeah, but I'd echo that, I mean, the fact that there's not a provision in the first place is slightly staggering, isn't it? But, um, so just to kind of go back through the, the way that this decision's been come to and the way that we are, why we are where we are. Um, the trial of the new nurse, nurse led model, that obviously didn't, did not succeed. But with you trialling a new nurse led model, presumably the the staffing wasn't at an adequate level even then with the demand as it was then, is that correct?
I think for the number of referrals that would have been there when when that model was was put in place, when it was first discussed, it probably was enough. But since then, the the referrals have increased massively. So at the time when it was being planned, yeah, but then there's been all the media, all the recognition about ADHD. And the referrals nationally have just risen exponentially.
With the decision to then focus on that, that staff model, and we obviously know that there's been a backdrop of that massively increasing referrals. I am someone that was was late diagnosed a couple of years ago, and I've tried to navigate it myself, so I've got that first hand experience of it. Was this, was, you know, we know that the referrals are going to be increasing, we know that there's more awareness, particularly for women. Um, because it presents so differently for women, they're realising in later life that a lot of the struggles that they've had, that might have been missed, I guess, in mental health. That actually have led into something that they realise they've had ADHD the whole time. So we've known that that, those referrals have been increasing. Has the, was the decision reviewed at any other point throughout these, this last three years? Because you've got referrals skyrocketing, as you've, as you've mentioned, and you've chosen to stop referring, to stop assessing people in the first place. But you know that that's going to exponentially increase your waiting list and backlog. So did you review that at any other point in the last three years?
Well, Alison and I have entered the service this year, so we can't really speak about about what's gone on in the past. I think the, uh, the medication, uh, referrals and treating people that had already got a diagnosis. Were something that needed to be done rapidly and to get those out of the way before we can start doing new assessments again. In terms of the, the pathway and the numbers of clinicians on the pathway, funding hasn't increased. So we're operating to the maximum that we can with 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 the funding that we've got. So I plan to get, um, another, another couple of nurses working for us and some, a support worker. This will take up our entire budget for ADHD, so it doesn't massively increase the number of people. That we can see, we've only got so much funding and there's only so much we can do.
But it will obviously be drastically more than what is present because there'll be more staff and then offering more assessments. Um, we are kind of following a very similar model to ASD in that one of those posts that we're offering out will be open to all allied health professionals with the relevant training. To be able to do ADHD, to hopefully improve that retention and recruitment.
Okay, so since the, thank you for that, since the decision to stop assessments happened three years ago. With the mitigations saying to work on the waiting well offer, has there been any support for people to wait well in the last three years?
Sorry, just trying to provide clarity, the decision wasn't three years ago for the stopping assessments, I think, was it? It's in twenty twenty two, so.
The report does say twenty twenty one, I think, is it not?
From SPAR, I think, um, and the funding that came, it should say, um, it should say May twenty two.
Okay.
I'll try and find it so I can stay aware.
So has there been support to wait well for people since May twenty twenty two in the ADHD service?
All I was going to say was that that the issue is still the same with staffing, so wherever the the limited number of staff. It was a decision of whether you use that staff to do assessments, do medication or to do waiting well or to do triage. Even just screening the referrals requires staff, so I think the decision, only by observation of the people that were involved at that time, which was before Rob and Alison were involved. Was that we've got these, at that point, two members of staff, they can either, they can only do one of these things, they can't do all of them. So there wasn't, yeah, there hasn't been any waiting well because we haven't had the, yeah, the resources to do that.
I was just, I'm not sure if the website had links, um, maybe historic links to support whilst waiting. Um, like I said, we have updated the websites in, so it's a little, it's it's definitely improved.
Yeah.
Um, just to point out, the report, it does say between May twenty two and September twenty twenty four, it's on page eight under ADHD waiting list. I apologise, I didn't put numbers. So it's literally the first line under ADHD waiting list, it just says our clinical priority within the service between May twenty two and September twenty four was to address those waiting for first medication appointment.
Page numbering is a little bit different, that's all, um, fantastic, thank you. Um, so there hasn't been any support for people to wait well and some people, some, for example, the ones that we've mentioned have been waiting for up to six years without any support during that time. Is that, just to confirm that's right?
Would, not for the ADHD, so they might be accessing other support services during that time.
Okay.
And we're not aware, I'm not aware, I think there's one, um, there is an ADHD support group, but comparatively to autism, there isn't as much even in the voluntary sector when it comes to ADHD as well. So we can't even kind of work with those partner agencies to, yeah, to increase that.
I suppose as someone who has, you know, tried to go through this process and and ended up going private because I couldn't get support and I knew that I wasn't going to get support. If there's that increased demand that we say, a lot of people who are waiting often feel like that's kind of a blamy thing to say. Because it's not, it's not my fault that I didn't realise until it was later on, it's not, that's not their fault that they weren't picked up earlier. Um, when we know that that demand has increased for this and we know that there's, you know, been all of the issues with the service. There's seemingly been a plan to just sort of stop assessments, not get help then whilst they're waiting. That then leads to a lot of bad press, where does the responsibility then lie for this?
That, I mean, I I can only express my. My sorrow about that and say I'm very sorry, but I I don't know where that responsibility lies. Alison and I were not in the team at this time. So I think those decisions that were made were probably taken back in May twenty two. That it's an oversight that that shouldn't have happened. And we're now trying to address this the best that we can.
Okay, thank you for for your responses, I'll I'll move over so that other people ask some questions, if that's okay.
Thanks, I think, I just want to reiterate that had had this matter come to scrutiny, I'm not saying we could have provided. The missing links, but we would certainly have been asking questions about what was going to happen to people while they're waiting. Um, and that sets in chain a different process whereby by holding the ICB to account. It it precipitates a a different pathway, if you see what I'm saying. So it may have been that, um, that that influence of scrutiny could have helped to deal with that oversight. So I hope some, some learning can be taken away about the importance of involving, um, you know, every, every part of the jigsaw.
Sorry, Ruth, if I could just come in, I think just certainly noting that point of I will get some further information on why this didn't come to scrutiny. Um, I am aware from historical conversations with the ICB, there were conversations about, for example, waiting well, subcontracting, waiting well initiatives and so on. Obviously, that's in the context of, um, you know, the other financial challenges that both the SHSC and the ICB experience. Um, so I I think it's better that there were conversations and plans around what else could be done. Um, but unfortunately, this was the, this was the mitigation that was was able to be put in time at the, at the time around prioritising those people who, you know, as colleagues have described. Who had already had a diagnosis but not medication. Um, obviously, people contacting the service to find out more about, um, you know, waiting times would be signposted as and as and when they made that contact. But we do recognise both as an ICB and, you know, as the SHSC, that a more proactive waiting well campaign really is preferable. So, you know, I think we've, you know, again, from an ICB perspective, I think there's definitely learning there around making sure that happens in a more timely way. Um, as well as from an SHSC perspective, but, um, you know, I think it's important.
Uh, right, Laura, and then I've seen Mick and Julie and Anne.
Thank you, um, I just, a quick question about the staff retention for the ADHD service, which you've mentioned in your report. Um, is that still an issue, what were the reasons for that, do you think that's resolved?
Uh, the reasons for that were people getting other jobs, um.
We had a lot of people go on maternity leave and then just deciding not to come back.
Okay.
So the, the, in a small team, you, the the usual things are a few people leave and then you you unable to recruit.
I think I've definitely felt there's an appetite for these jobs just internally. So people have kind of contacted me internally to say, oh, we're aware that some jobs are coming out, can we? So I'm confident that when these jobs go out, they will be recruited to. And hopefully, um, we've got the appropriate kind of leadership and whatever else to kind of retain that, I'm staying positive.
I was just going to say, to just add to that, one of the issues with the the staff that were recruited a couple of years back now was that they they weren't already trained in ADHD. So we had to then train them up with the appropriate kind of the training and then by the time that had happened and some had moved on or gone maternity leave. Um, whereas this time we're recruiting people that have already got that, because it's not, you know, it's quite a specialist area. So it's really difficult to find people that are already skilled and experienced in assessment and and treatment for ADHD. So, um, this time, one of the other things the trust has done is is offered some training to staff in different services around assessment for ADHD. So some of the people, some of the people that have done that will be attracted to the place as well.
I think the other thing to note as well is that we 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 did lose a lot of nurses to the private sector. So because in the private sector, you can get paid a substantial amount of money by moving over, some of those staff did move over into private sector. And obviously there are issues around nurse, um, nurse recruitment, the number of nurses that we've got has has reduced. So it's not just, I think across the organisation, there are issues with, um, nurse vacancies. Um, the the, the nurse, the the lead nurse within the ADHD service at the time left. And then I think the other nurses then had not got necessarily the same support, so they then kind of drifted and left. And then being able to recruit people with experience has been a massive challenge.
Thank you, I've just got one very quick question on the ASD diagnosis rate, just out of interest. And the average being eighty percent of people receiving a diagnosis, of the twenty percent who don't receive a diagnosis, is that generally, is there anything else for them? If they, do they, do you refer on to other places for other things?
Yeah, so the main reasons why somebody doesn't go on to get, because if they've been through our triage process, they will at least have some traits. Um, whether we think of warrant, um, further assessment, the main reason somebody wouldn't kind of meet the criteria is usually if those traits weren't felt to be sufficient to be having that significant impact on them. Um, or that we feel that there's a better explanation, so often people have kind of came over with mental health difficulties or diagnoses. So in the, in the case of other, other difficulties, we would direct to the relevant service, so if it's mental health services or talking therapies. If it was around traits of neurodivergence or sometimes I think actually ADHD is maybe a better explanation. We'd direct people either to a different pathway or we'd we'd look at saying, well, there's no harm in using kind of autism friendly strategies. Or accessing third sector organisations just because you don't reach that that threshold. So, yeah, we do, we we do comprehensive reports after every assessment with recommendations.
But a quick question, if say you've identified someone with who might have ADHD, would they go to the bottom of the ADHD waiting list? Or they'd be seen with priority having already waited?
So historically, and this is one of the developments we're working on at the minute, they would, they would retain their wait, original wait to the service. But we moved over to the ADHD pathway, so they wouldn't have to wait from the beginning again, although they would still have to wait because of the discrepancy in the waiting times. But one of the things we're working on at the minute, I mentioned training, and that some of the staff have done on ADHD assessments. So some of those staff, the the autism assessment clinicians have done the ADHD training now. So we're planning to pilot a dual assessment model, because we know that that's what most service users want. They don't want to come for two separate assessments that are years apart, of course they don't, they want to have it all in one go. But just because of the way the services have been configured, that's just not been possible up until now. So we're piloting that that new dual assessment model this year just to see if it's something that's viable and we can still meet other targets, so.
That's great, thank you very much. Thank you, Mick.
Uh, one's a comment, I mean, I'm completely staggered that there is no service in Derbyshire. And that they've had to be sent to us to cause even greater strain on a, on a service that is already under enormous pressure. I just find it staggering that that has been allowed to happen. Uh, the other is, unfortunately, during the, because some of the answers have been quite complicated, because it's a complicated area. I've lost track of during the discussion of which age group was waiting six years.
That's the adults, so if we're talking about the ADHD, our longest wait was was six years and that's for an adult with ADHD.
Right, so is, while they're, while they're waiting for that six years, who who looks after that individual in terms of their everyday, so getting through everyday life? By, you know, getting up in the morning, going to do the shopping, making sure that they're well fed, et cetera, et cetera, who does that?
ADHD is, is something that you have all your life. So usually people have maybe identified some problems in their life that they have. Maybe with the concentration, maybe, maybe it occurs when they come to a new part of the life and they find that they've got some issues. So it's not something new, so it's, they've been brought up with this, they've lived with this all their life. So it's not a, a new thing that's found. So some people will manage absolutely perfectly well, some people will need more help than others, so it's very much on an individual basis.
Do supporting people contracts still exist or have they disappeared? And are the, are people who have these issues entitled to a, how do you say, a personal budget? That's not the right expression, it's a self. I've forgotten, I've forgotten the name of the the budgets. I've forgotten the name of the budgets that came in many years ago. Taken up in large numbers by people with learning disabilities.
Yeah, I think something that maybe wasn't clear in the presentation and apologies for that is that the SANS service wouldn't see people, one of our exclusion criteria is people who would meet a learning disability diagnosis. So we don't see people with learning disabilities and the community learning disabilities team will do their own autism assessments if they think that's helpful. So we work with adults who, on the whole, are able to function to a level day-to-day, but there are some areas where they really struggle and hence why they're coming for an assessment. Sometimes people are linked in with social care, so they might have got like a community care assessment or social care assessment. And again, that's something that's kind of accessed separately to us. Or they might be under mental health services already. Often with ADHD, people are under ADHD mental health services as well. So as a diagnostic service, we would only be doing the assessment and the diagnosis.
I think the point I'm trying to make is that if you just say waiting six years, it's very stark. And in fact, there is actually some support available through services. They're not just left on their own, waiting for six years. Because that's what it sounds like on initial hearing. And I think it's a personal budget that people, I was trying to get to, where you can actually hire a personal assistant to make sure that you get through today in a reasonable manner, if you know what I mean. I'm not explaining this very well.
Personal budgets were needs-led, weren't they? They were assessed by social services from my understanding of them from some years ago. So if there's a need there, I think there would still be access through social services. Very often, we get asked for people with ADHD. Some of the time, we get people like students coming to us who've just arrived at university in Sheffield. We get asked about the need for time adjustments for things like exams and stuff like that. And only when you've got a diagnosis can you get adjustments like that. Same for work. You know, some people need this diagnosis for work to get an adjustment. And maybe that's something that we need to look at, that the needs can be dealt with without getting a diagnosis. But that's taking the normalising and getting everybody used to the diagnosis of ADHD and getting all our services and all our educational services in line and doing something to help.
I think the website has been improved with information about support that people can access whilst on the waitlist. And as we mentioned earlier, we are on the cusp of sending out letters to everyone to kind of validate whether people still need an assessment and kind of signposting that support within those letters. We're just dealing with the kind of, I guess, the Derbyshire transfer initially. And then it's imminent that those letters are due to go out.
Julie.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you for the report. I think it's probably very timely in light of the fact that this is an issue that's very much in the media at the moment. And certainly from watching TV interviews with people, the difference the diagnosis makes when it's given correctly and they're on the proper medication and support makes a massive difference. So the fact that we have so many people waiting is obviously a concern and I'm sure you're all very concerned about it. Picking up on the point that Laura just made in relation to what happens with diagnosis. At some point in the presentation, you talked about the number of inappropriate referrals. And that was something that sort of started alarm bells ringing with me, the fact that you just mentioned, you know, that eighty percent of people needed a diagnosis or twenty percent don't. Those twenty percent of people must be in a really tricky situation for a number of years, believing that something may be wrong with them, then ultimately they find out that it's not that, it's perhaps something else.
Yeah, those numbers, sorry, were just for the autism, that's not for ADHD, so just to clarify.
Sorry, I'm jumping about. So I think there's an issue there in terms of what are we doing with other medical professionals that those patients are seeing to make sure that they are putting the correct cue for the correct diagnosis in terms of training and support, be it for GPs, community nurses or whoever it may be. So that, you know, if I know I'm put on a waiting list, I know that chances are I'm going to get seen and I'm going to get the appropriate support and not have spent a period of time thinking I've got something to be told. It's not that, it's something else. Because that must be really worrying for people. So I think that's one point. And then going back to the Derbyshire issue that everybody's picked up on. And again, Laura mentioned about the staffing and the problems with staffing. My concern is, are you likely to lose staff who may go to Derbyshire when Derbyshire have got things in place? Because presumably they've got to set something up. So will that be another hole in the very finite resource that we already have? Or even is there something contractual that we will lose? Because Derbyshire have been paying for a piece of staffing to cover for the costs of the service that they're providing. Will that be an issue for us in Sheffield because of the resource that we may be losing when the contract ends? Thank you.
So to touch on the first part about referrals and inappropriate referrals, we are working with the Provider Collaborative, which is, I think, Rotherham, I'm looking at Liz, have set up. And we've been invited to participate in that, where ADHD kind of professionals are around the table as well as GPs to try and get the referral process as efficient and as comprehensive as possible. So kind of talking to the GPs to say, okay, so within the time slot that you have, what can you offer and take from somebody that comes and says, I think I have ADHD? And what do we as a service need in order to kind of effectively screen and say, yep, that person is or isn't appropriate for the service? So I believe something is being developed and the plan is that that will kind of be the same referral. We'll be, yeah, across those participants of the Provider Collaborative, we will use the same referral process. It's not at the point of going live yet, but I know Rob and I attended a couple of meetings within the last kind of few months. So we're due to pick that back up. So that's just to touch on that. And then the second one was about the Derbyshire. So I don't think we envisage that staff will go. Obviously, at the minute, we don't, we've got the half-time consultant, we've got the full-time specialty doctor. We don't have the model recruited to yet. Like I say, it's imminently going through our internal processes to be recruited to. So I don't envisage that people will go. Like I said, I definitely have had people kind of querying about jobs that are going out and things like that. So I think the appetite is there kind of definitely internally, if not externally. Obviously, the post will be internal and external. But yeah, I don't think that will go. I don't know if I will. So I think there is a finan, I think there was some funding that will obviously cease. But our models have been developed on kind of excluding that. So it's not, we don't envisage any kind of...
I think it's already been accounted for.
Exactly.
And in terms of kind of what that amount to versus the additional demand for Derbyshire, it wasn't, you know, viable anyway to keep going. And just on Mick's point about the Derbyshire services, I think the Sheffield service has always been, in fact, before we saw Sheffield, we were a national service, so lots of areas had contracted Sheffield as a specialist service. And just some have been quicker in setting up their own services than others, so I suppose that's why it is how it is.
Thank you. I think, Anne, and then I think we'll be out of time.
A few of my questions have already been answered. Where it talks about the clinical model transformation programme is not at a point of progression. Is there any kind of timescale when that is likely to be progressed? And have any other services faced this level of stalling due to these transformation plans?
So we don't actually lead on the primary care mental health transformation. So I know that they're, I think they're kind of still at phase one, I want to say, which is that kind of first point, primary care support. So I can't speak on behalf of that transformation. I know that it is part of their plan. We can try and get that information in terms of when they envisage, you know, ADHD specialist services would be part of that. But I'm not privy to those conversations, I suppose, is what I'm saying. I don't know if you are. I don't know.
Sorry, the second question was just have any other services faced this level of stalling due to these transformation plans? But you might not know the answer to that either. So yeah.
There are different processes within different models. So I don't think it's a standard thing that every place would have a step to care model within the primary care transformation. But I can find out if there's any more information in terms of the primary care model as well. Generally, we are aware that other ICBS and other places have experienced this high demand and issues with recruitment as well though. So unfortunately, Sheffield isn't the only area that is experiencing this demand and is also experiencing, I suppose, the impact of, there is no additional, at the moment, no additional national funding that comes for ADHD or autism to meet this new demand. So it is a very challenging situation. There are people within Sheffield who choose to go through a right-to-choice patient choice model. So ADHD assessments have been happening during the period that we've talked about. But this has been where people have either gone through a right-to-choice or a private approach. That obviously for some people is a very positive thing because they would have had their assessment in a more timely way. But it's also challenging from a financial perspective for the ICB because of the national arrangements around where people go through a right-to-choice model and where that is an appropriate referral to right-to-choice, then ICBS then have to pay that, you know, pay for that bill. Whereas in an ideal world, ICBS would like to have, obviously would not want to stop there being patient choice. But if we could have that funding, that envelope of funding, then that would be much, that we have the discretion to then put to our local services rather than having to, you know, pay a cross-street to, you know, to private providers. And that would be, obviously, give us more flexibility around the funding that we'd have for these models. So again, this isn't just a Sheffield challenge, this is a challenge that we're facing unfortunately nationally as well.
Sure. Would you mind if I jump in on that quickly? Just as a, it seems like this is almost like a running wheel where you have people who are at the wits' end because there aren't any assessments taking place in the service. I personally know of a few people that have been crying out for a lot of help and have ended up in mental health services because of the stress that the lack of support has been giving them. Then they, those that can afford to might go private and they end up in a shared care agreement, which obviously then adds, you know, as you say, the financial pressure and so on and so forth. And so it continues. How do we square that circle? How do we break that cycle? Other than national funding, obviously, we know that the demand is going to keep increasing. This isn't going to change, this isn't going to be something that's going to go away overnight. So how do we then plan to break that cycle? Otherwise, it's just going to keep affecting services like SANS going forward.
Yeah, it's a big question. I don't think I can necessarily provide all the answers to it. But I think certainly in terms of right-to-choice, obviously, people can go through an NHS route, which means they don't pay for that route. But that is still with a private provider, though the ICBs would then still pay for that. Obviously, what we want to be in the position of, and this is what colleagues in the trust are working very hard on, is being very clear on what the actual demand and capacity is within the existing model, which is what's happening at the moment. And that then gives, from an ICB perspective, an understanding of exactly how many, you know, how many assessments can happen within that model, what the gap is and what the gap is to get to what is an acceptable position. Obviously, as I said, there is no additional funding, but certainly some of the discussions that have been happening, both at an ICB-like place and across the other, across the Provider Collaboratives, which is all of the mental health trusts working together, is around, you know, what the potential investor saves are around, those big chunks of money that are going out through right-to-chosen as well. So it is obviously things that we, you know, we're looking at and other trusts within South Yorkshire are looking at as well. Because as you say, it's a vicious cycle, isn't it, of there not being enough money to go into local services? But then people need and often access private providers because they have to wait so long. And that's obviously their choice to do that.
I suppose my question then is, why was this, why was that demand analysis? And obviously, there was pressure on the service because the decision to not do any more assessments was taken in twenty-twenty-two. So why was that work not done then? Why is it happening now? And why has it taken this last two years to get to this point?
I think it's a really good point. Obviously, there has been work going on during that time. I mean, unfortunately, we're all quite new to this particular area of work, but there have been other colleagues who have been working on that. Unfortunately, that is alongside all the other pressures, you know, and the other demands that both the trust, you know, and obviously ICB are covering as well at the same time. But I appreciate that it isn't acceptable, it's not acceptable nationally, you know, the picture nationally around funding isn't acceptable. And Sheffield is obviously struggling at the brunt of that. But that isn't to say that, you know, from a Sheffield perspective, and ICB and SHSC are very much, you know, working together on this, is that we want to make sure that we're doing absolutely the best that we can with the funding that we do have. And then to be looking at, you know, what are the opportunities for what more we can do. But obviously, within that financial context as well, I think they're just really good points that you've raised there.
Okay, the clock has struck. So to conclude our business, I think we need to extend the meeting by up to ten minutes just so we can get through the work programme item as well. So, okay, just to round everything off. So I'm going to thank you for attending today and for putting so much time into producing the report and answering our questions and being so clear about everything. So no doubt, our dialogue will be ongoing. We have a workshop on the fifteenth of October, which is a public event, which is very much about us giving an opportunity to people who have lived experience of waiting, diagnosis, waiting for that assessment and waiting well and that whole pathway. So that the main aim is to hear from people directly, their stories. And hopefully, that will set things in an even better context for you and for us. So that's, just to sort of put that as the next step. And then I think we'll just have a quick discussion about what else we might want to do with this piece of work as we go on. But thank you for your time today. So it remains for us to quickly look at the recommendation here, having received that report. So the subcommittee is invited to receive and appraise the report and to support the continued programme of work to improve the experience and quality of service for autistic people and/or people with attention deficit hyperactivity disorder. So that's hopefully acceptable to everybody to have received the report and appraised it. And then I'd like to look at what we do next with our workshop forthcoming. And perhaps to plan a little bit beyond that, obviously, we'll then have our findings from the workshop and how we'd like to take the work forward, if there are any proposals. Rob?
Given the complexity of what we're doing and the amount of changes happening and the kind of lack of insight so far, is it worth setting up a working group? Just so we can have more time to actually dig into this.
Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion. Rob's suggesting setting up a working group to take this particular piece of work forward. I think our normal process would be maybe to ask for another update in six months or a year. But I think there's more work we want to do after the workshop to look at what we've discovered and how to sort of, how to report on that up to the date of the workshop, similar to the work we've done with dentistry, and then how to go forward from that. So I think if there's a working group in place to undertake that, that might be useful. Laura?
I just wondered if you wanted to extend the scope of the working group. It would be a longer piece of work, but to go on to consider children's services. Because I hear from people in our ward all the time that they're waiting for assessments for children. So it's probably, it's like connected but separate, but maybe it'd be worth sort of putting the two together in terms of our focus, accepting it'll take longer because we've got to work through what we're doing already with adults.
I think that's a really good suggestion, Lauren, not least because obviously on the adult health and social care, we're doing such a lot of work about transitions and the issues with transitions. So I think really it's fundamental that we do pick that up to make sure that we get everything in the proper place as we move forward, we're saying. So yeah.
I think that's right. And I'm slightly mindful as well that members on this subcommittee have been predominantly from adults. And that we, you know, we'd always run the risk of under-representing really children's health. So I would really like us to go on to look at children as a discrete thing and then tie the two together, if that's an acceptable way forward.
As opposed to, with the children's report, I think that it potentially should come as its own item to your committee because obviously it'll be staffed, as we know, completely differently. It'll be potentially sat under different management, all of those kinds of things. So as much as setting up a working group on this, on adults, would be something that I think we definitely should do and I think it's a really good suggestion. I'm not, I think that decisions around what we're going to do with children's, I think it should come to a report to committee first, rather than massively expanding the scope of the working group, if that makes sense, ahead of it. Just unless, unless, I'm happy to talk about it, not totally against having a working group with a massive scope. I just think that potentially, as it will be staffed and resourced differently, that perhaps a report should come to committee about it in detail first and then we can decide. We can see the state of play and we can decide it from there, if that's something that's okay. The only cynical part of me about setting up a working group for adults in particular is they have said about the new models obviously being very much slowed down by transformation plans, at which we have no idea from the answers to the questions as to when that's going to conclude either. So I'm not sure how, in terms of the work that we can do on a working group, how that might tie into the work going forward. I think we'd need to find out when those transformation plans are going to be and what stages they're at so that we can make sure that the working group is constructive and feeds into that appropriately as well. Does that make sense? Sorry.
That makes perfect sense. I think the first step would be to establish a working group which can discuss its remit rather than try to decide, pin too many details down today. But I think the principle of a working group, off the back of the report we've received and the workshop that we'll conduct in October, I think the principle of that is good. We may be thinking a bit rapidly about it right now. So maybe leave the remit for a first discussion of that group when it's established. But I do think it's important that members from the children's committee have the chance to be involved in that because there is the issue of transitions. Rob?
The thing, I get keeping the two separate because they're two distinct entities, but the, often within autism, the mental age versus the physical age are two very different things. So we transition children when we decide they're 17, because it's usually 17 or 18. But quite often, there's children really sociologically more 15, so they're getting thrown into the adults. So there is a conversation we had between the two being mixed, would agree.
Okay. So I think to establish a working group, which will discuss all this. I've got two minutes left, Steve. We need to discuss the rest of the work programme. We've got two minutes left to discuss the work programme. I'll just move on to that.
There's a link into the work, I mentioned this previously. There's a link into the work that the Main Policy Committee is doing around the transitions, I think.
Yes, yes, I think that's been recognised, yeah. So we'd be talking to Andrew Weewell and the rest of the team around that. Going to move on to the rest of the work programme really quickly.
It does tie into that, I suppose, as there was a, I was asking whether we should have an item similarly laid out and similarly with similar scope to this brought to committee on children's services as well. So I suppose that feeds into that, that is on the next item technically. Apologise.
Yeah. So to note that to be added to the work programme with a discussion as to when that, what kind of timescale is needed to get the report. Okay, that's gone on. So the November meeting, which is on the 7th of November, I'm minded to ask for a report back on dentistry, a response to our report and the recommendations. So as not to leave that too long. I'm minded to ask to bring that back in November. And also to bear in mind that at this point last year, in the October meeting last year, we received a report on the winter plan. So that's looking at the resilience of urgent care services and discharge and issues around that. We received a report in October last year, so maybe that's timely to ask for something in November this year.
Sorry, I should have noticed before the meeting because I did look at the work programme. Did we agree at our previous meeting to consider looking at the long COVID clinic service in light of that being a relatively new service?
Yeah, happy to take that request. Would that be of interest to people? Yeah. Maybe we could look for that in December.
Yeah, it was discussed at the last meeting. There are a number of issues with the transfer of the last work programme report in its old format into the new format. And I seem to have lost some key pieces of information, so I'm going to make sure you've got the right version next time.
And I'd also like the committee to think about examining access to GP appointments specifically around booking systems and the disparities that there are across different GP practices in the city. So I'd like to propose that at some point where it fits into the programme. Any objections? Right, I think that takes us as far as we can with the work programme. Deborah, yeah, thank you. Okay, so thanks everyone for your input today. And next meeting on December November and our workshop on the 15th of October.